I would like to open the regular planning board meeting for October 18th. It is six oh two PM. We are being video recorded and maybe audio recorded, I guess not. But we are also going out live, I think, so we're on the TV as we speak. So I would like to welcome you all here. First up, our administrative items. An approval not required for Pierce Farm Revocable Trust. File number twenty-two dash oh oh three A. Request by the applicant for endorsement of a plan of land showing two lots for land located at seven sixty-four Pine Hill Road, map forty-three lot eight. Mr. Nicholas.
Excuse me, Frank Nicholas for Pierce Farm Trust. And this is Bob Pierce's Newberry Farm on Pine Hill Road. Can we get the plan up? Thank you. Okay, so if you probably know or aware that the plan is to put this into a conservation restriction. The restriction will be held by the town of Westport in conjunction with the Westport Land Conservation Trust. But prior to doing that, Mr. Pierce would like to remove one lot, but also two posses of land from the area that's going to be put into the conservation trust. So first, what we have over here is lot one. That was Bob Pierce's house, that was part of the entire farm. If he wants to remove that, you have sixty thousand seven square feet of area, one hundred fifty feet of frontage. They have qualified as a viable lot in current zoning. Also over here, these two lots were removed quite a while ago by the A and R process. This is Bob's system lot one, this is property, this is his house itself. And what he'd like to do is create this parcel to include his barn and also run up to where the stone wall ends on Pine Hill Road. So that'll be the first parcel. The other thing here, which is kind of interesting, is this parcel here in the back. The research that I did going back to seventeen eighty-three describes the back line of this property, which is the middle of the swamp, as being a straight line. The parcel over here to the east, which was owned, it's twenty acres of parcel, owned by Maderis as recently as nineteen eighty, thereabouts. Now subsequently, these two lots have taken up by A and R, this is Caroline Way subdivision. This is the remaining land of Maderis. There's no deed that I can find anywhere that describes the jobs in this line. There's a plan over here that was done by Samuel Coors in nineteen sixty, which identifies a bound here, and another plan that was done in the nineties by Bill Morse, who shows piled stones right over here. I mean guessing as to how this wound up being a lot in line that it is, but considering this line has existed since seventeen eighty-three and it's in the middle of a swamp, right? When I say swamp, I don't mean wetland, I mean any bucket to get through there. I can't understand why there'd ever be a job in that line. All the deeds reference this line as being a straight line, there's no evidence of any conveyance. I did call the surveyor's record over here, we have the overlap, gave him my information, and he did agree we weren't placing the line. So because we have a disputed area, even though the two surveyors are in agreement, this becomes a legal issue and how this is going to be addressed. I can't imagine it would be a problem because of what the land is, but I've been warned about that before. This can't go into the conservation restriction, so it's just going to be held out as part of the farm.
So it'll have no owner?
No, it'll have an owner, it's still owned, but in my opinion, it's owned by Pierce.
Okay.
But there is deeds and other things that show plans that have it over there. And I'm just saying that I believe the line to be in this location and other plans showed it being over here. But I have the whole file that I have related to us and that I have related to us completely.
So you're carving it out as a parcel, but it'll still be in the same ownership?
Correct.
But not under conservation restriction?
Correct, because of the competencies.
But it's all wetlands?
Oh, yeah. Swamp, swamp.
Swamp.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
What's the special use area specification?
Down over here?
Yeah.
Okay, this is an area that it's totally part of the conservation restriction. Is this the most recent plan? All right, well, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I look at it just as special use, I'm sorry. That's an area that's going to be under conservation restriction, but it would be an area which a house could be built. If a farmer were to buy this land and wanted to build a house on it rather than be moved somewhere else, he would be allowed to go doing it in that area. But it would not be a separate lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Frank, what's happening in the, are the blue lines a new lot or something wrapped around the house and?
Just here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the, that's the parcel that's going to be added to that lot.
No, the inside, the internal blue lines. Or maybe they're not blue, are they blue?
Yeah.
Oh, these, they're structured.
No, 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 I know the structures, there's a line.
A parallelogram.
There's no dimension on this.
Oh, no, oh yeah, okay, no, those are the lots that were removed previously by a different A and R process. They're not, they're not part of this farm.
So the A and R lot runs around?
Exactly. It runs around this way, here.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So you're just expanding that basic land for the house?
Yeah, to include the.
To include the barn and whatever that is.
Correct.
Thank you, I don't have any further questions.
Has the land trust reviewed this and accepted it?
Yeah, actually, I'm sure about a week ago, last month, I got the presentation and then somebody had to move.
All right. So do we need a, your stamp on here?
Yeah, this is a PDF on the, this is on the, you've got a stamp?
Yeah, your stamp.
Yeah, it should be on, it's on the file, yeah.
It's on there, yeah.
Okay. Okay. If there's no further comments, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the endorsement of the plan entitled Plan of Land AP forty-three lot eight, seven sixty-four Pine Hill Road for Pierce Farm Revocable Trust because the plan complies with the provisions of MGH Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one P.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next would be to authorize our new town planner, Michael Burris, to be able to endorse as clerk of the planning board, sign off on plans approved by the board or to make any other certification under the subdivision control law. Basically, this is for A and R's, like the plan we just did, so I don't think there's any.
You want a motion or do you want to talk about it?
Anybody can talk about it.
I'll move to approve Michael Burris to sign off on plans and any other certification under the subdivision control law on behalf of the planning board.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is the Disability Commission to discuss sidewalk requirement changes. Is there somebody here for this?
I am.
Okay. If you could come to the table and talk into one of the microphones over here.
I'm Brian Gallagher, and the chairman of the Commission on Disability here in town. With me is Martin Costa, I'm also a member.
Okay.
I've submitted a letter to the planning board. What we would like to do is see an amendment to the rules and regulations that would require a developer to put inside one, or at least one side of the street. If there were going to be five, one more house is built. Right now, the rules and regulations say sidewalk is required for twenty houses. And as I explained in the letter, the sidewalk makes it easier for someone like me to get from house to house without having to go into the street. And that creates sort of a hazard, and if there's another car parked on the street, then I have to go further out into the street. And it also creates anxiety for the person who builds it. And sidewalks also help to develop a sense of community. You can get from neighbor to neighbor without having to worry about going out on the street. I received an email from Amy saying that we need a public hearing. So essentially, I guess what I'm asking for is what do we need to do to get this into a public hearing so that that paragraph in bylaw can be amended to read five houses instead of one?
Okay, I agree that we should do that. And I think that we have to follow a public process to do that. And I think that we could start the ball rolling here by suggesting that we do that, and then we'd have to call a public hearing to go over it when we're doing other things as well for the coming, for the coming year. So I would be, I agree that sidewalks are an asset and that they are something that we should be doing for ADA compliance. And I just agree with you, I think we can do it. Do you have any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, you mentioned we should discuss this in a public hearing when we're doing other things. And the only concern I have is one of time. Does that put off the public hearing some indefinite time as opposed to scheduling a public hearing for this purpose? I think that, for example, if we were to put this off and have the public hearing in February, March, when there's likely to be snow on the ground, it may discourage people who have the most to say about this issue from attending the public hearing. Whereas if we were to schedule a public hearing soon on this issue, we might get better attendance on this issue. So I think there's, I happen to share, I think, the same feelings you do, Mr. Chair, that this is a good idea. And I think if we can, we have public hearings frequently. If we can schedule a public hearing and get on with it, I think it might be worth doing.
Yeah, I think we can. The question in my mind, are there going to be other changes that we want to make?
Yeah.
To our rules and regulations, that it would be from a time standpoint and from having town council look at our changes, to do it all together. That is my only point.
But I think that there's two steps. One is having the public hearing part, and the other is packaging recommendations on that with other recommendations we might want to do. But I think getting the public hearing part done.
Yeah, I think we could. I think then we also have to forward it on to the board of selectmen for their approval.
Yeah.
So, not that they would change anything that we send over, but I mean, it's just the way it goes. So I guess the only question in my mind is, is it, is five or more houses the right number? You know, should it be three or four or something like that? Or some metric that is, has to do with the density? I just don't know.
How did you arrive at five?
Well, clearly twenty is too many, and we thought that five would be a reasonable number.
Yeah.
Two might be too few, four might be too few, but five seems reasonable. It's a cost that could be borne by the contractor and will pass along to his virus.
Yeah.
Well, it's a lot cheaper to do it, as we'll talk about later in another issue. If you design it when you're building a road and you're designing it in instead of trying to go back and do it after. So it, I think we just need to think a bit about, are there other instances where we would want sidewalks, why would we have fewer than five lots in a subdivision?
I think that can be, how does the discussion of the public hearing, the actual words and craft of it, so. I take my colleague's point that submitting a public hearing, and this is an amendment of the subdivision rules and regulations and not rezoning, so.
So we have to go to town.
It's an easier process.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I'm just imagining a subdivision of, let's say, four lots. So it's a relatively short street and therefore you could, as you were saying, if you couldn't find a parking space directly in front of the house you were visiting, you're probably not going to be parked that far away to be able to get to that house along the road, which would have very little traffic. So once, so I think if you talk about five houses or more, then you're in a bigger subdivision and then you might have more traffic and you've got further distances to travel to find a parking space, perhaps. Therefore, you would need the sidewalk. So it seems, I mean, it's a little bit of an arbitrary decision as to whether, you know, it's five houses, three houses, seven houses, but five seems like a reasonable number to me as well.
Okay, so then I would indicate a motion to set a public hearing for this.
What does the calendar look like?
So you would need to advertise for two weeks in a row. What would happen is we could draft a legal notice and put it out to the paper. So I would say November thirteenth would be your earliest for a public hearing. I'm sorry, November fifteenth.
That's fine.
Does that, does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay.
You've done it, you asked, what do I need to do, you've done it.
Yeah. And I can send you the proof and, you know, if there's any different wording that you prefer, we can, we can edit that, but November fifteenth should be fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there'll be a public advertisement, so we'll see what time, if that's a date, it'll be soon. We'll try to get the administrative items out.
So we need a motion to schedule this for November fifteenth.
I would move that at the request of the Disability Commission, we schedule a public hearing at an hour to be determined on November fifteenth to discuss sidewalk requirements to the subdivision?
Subdivision rules and regulations.
Six fifteen will work if you guys want to make it.
Six fifteen, okay. Six fifteen.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is two thousand twenty-three town meeting revisit of zoning bylaw articles that were passed over last year. Do you have a list of those?
Oh, I don't have a, I don't have a list of them. But we, we did speak about, do you want me to pass it over at town meeting or we just didn't put them on?
There were several that were passed over in the past three years because of COVID. So in the interest of having quick town meetings outside in the parking lot of the high school and at the request of the town moderator, we did pass over some of those. And I think we need to revisit what those were and see if they're still interested in having us do it. But we've had, we did some last year as well, so I don't know if that was sufficient or not. And you've touched base with Mr. Menard?
Michael has, yes.
And has he come back to you with anything?
He hasn't provided me with a list. And it's, we don't have anyone, I've not met anyone from the VZA yet, so no one's attended this tonight, right?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so we can, we can get a list from, from the VCA.
Okay, I just need to let them know that time is really of the essence. We're running out of time to start writing stuff, so. And we're going to be busy with rezoning north of Westport in the commercial zone. Very busy, I hope Russ has gotten us a contract?
I've been copying Michael on the emails, but I have not heard from him.
Okay. So I think that, I don't know what more we can talk about on those things until we have an idea of what they are. Next up is administrative items, C, E, I'm sorry, Oak Ridge Independent Living Facility. File number oh six dash oh oh one, special permit. The residents would like to discuss outstanding items, and I think there's a few of them here, so.
Good evening, I'm Mark Allard, and I am a resident, eight plus years, of Oak Ridge with my wife, and I'm on my second term of the board. And I think this is Michael Burris, welcome.
Thank you.
I just don't know whether you've been brought up to speed about the history of this issue.
I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, well, feel free to ask questions. I'm just going to say simply at the outset that on November second of last year is when there was first a meeting to discuss this issue, which was a result of the as-built plan that has a lot of deficiencies by the developer. And so now we're almost a year hence, and we've gotten nowhere, mostly because any meeting that has been scheduled, there's been a continuance. So fortunately, the planning board, which has been very amiable, and Amy and Nadine, to our concerns, gave us an opportunity to, and we do have quite a cross-section of our residents and board members here. As well, Amy and Bob and Jim and Manny have all been to the Oak Ridge development, so you can ask them questions. So Dave asked me to kind of read an opening statement, kind of just sort of set the tone. I think it kind of captures where we as a community are at this point. Some of you may have seen this, we did submit this back in June, but that meeting, of course, was canceled. So bear with me. Since Richard LeBlanc was granted a continuance at the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two planning board meeting, we have continued to gather information in several key areas. The cost to correct deficiencies throughout the Oak Ridge community now exceeds ninety-four thousand dollars, and that figures more now. These deficiencies are directly attributed to the following factors. Richard LeBlanc's blatant disregard adhering to the approved as-built plan. Shoddy workmanship performed by unqualified tradespeople, particularly in the building of the foundations. Most of them have had cracks and continue to need attention for water getting into the basements. The poor quality of some of the building materials, the lack of oversight by town officials. In addition, we have gathered documentation with invoices from many homeowners, some of whom are here, who paid out of their own pockets for construction problems to be corrected. Some of those identified within the first month of moving in. We have reviewed planning board meeting minutes dating from two thousand six. Areas of concern were identified in the very early stages of this development. One of the most egregious was Richard LeBlanc putting in all the roadways and drainage, ignoring the mandate that he was to meet with the town engineers before doing so. We also discovered letters sent to the planning board by Oak Ridge residents detailing multiple problems with the construction of their units that were discovered within days of taking ownership. Recently, Richard LeBlanc approached Dave Bork, our president of the Oak Ridge Board of Trustees, in an offer of six thousand eight hundred dollars to resolve this matter before the planning board. Without question, this is totally unacceptable in terms of a financial sentiment. Also, to accept sixteen hundred dollars would minimize the substantial emotional impact that the residents of Oak Ridge have experienced and continue to this day. We definitely want a resolution. Equally important, we hope this experience will serve as a vivid example to the planning board and town officials as to what can go wrong when the developer contractor is not thoroughly vetted and projects are not managed with substantial oversight by town officials. That's the framework that we want to present. And we're looking for some support. We feel accountability is long overdue. And that, quite frankly, we hope something like this never happens again in the town of Westport because it's, you know, we have, we've always had full. All our housing units are fully occupied, they've always been, there's never been a. But invariably, as this has unfolded over the last several months, we hear stories from people like, oh, I had to take care of this, I had to take care of that. And Dave is sort of our resident expert on the different projects that we've had to undertake. As well, things that we have not done, sidewalks are kind of the headline. We didn't ask Brian to be here, but I couldn't have been a better preface. One of the greatest concerns, that safety issues were the ones that were ignored. We are an over fifty-five community, but I would say now we could probably qualify as an over seventy community. We don't have sidewalks, we don't have the indicated pathways, pedestrian walkways, which are supposed to be highlighted. We don't have pull chains within the housing units in total that were supposed to be integrated for emergencies, fire, and police. So, you know, that's very disconcerting, that an over fifty-five community with safety issues, and not to mention other things, which Dave can elaborate on. So I'll be right here, Dave's right next to me, he's got more information.
Thank you. Is this microphone working? Yes, it is. Okay. I'm just going to reiterate. Could you identify yourself?
My name is David Bork, B-O-U-R-Q-U-E. I'm president of the Oak Ridge Condominium Trust Association. I've been president going on five years, and I think this will be my last year, according to my wife.
We've been all. Oh, that works.
Yeah, right. I've been sort of a handyman all my life, as far as mechanical engineering kind of things. And since I've been president, and before that when I was just on the board, I was always thinking ahead of what can be done to make improvements in our association. Just to give a little history, we have had, as Mark mentioned, we're going, we're an over fifty-five community, but we're gradually getting way close to that. I'm going to be eighty next January. A lot of our people are way over eighty years old. We have lost, since I've been here, in the condos, I, we've lost six people. In other words, they passed away. We now have twenty residents, they're single people, alone, widows, widowers. So that's almost fifty percent of the entire association are people that are living alone. So that's where we have issues with safety and so forth. We do have the ambulance quite often. We just had another incident this week with one of our residents who broke her hip. So there's a lot of things going on. I'm just going to go through for the benefit of our new planning board, planning board person, some of the things that we've, we've done, we've looked at. One of the things we brought up, of course, was the thing that we were just aware of, started in October, I wanted to go through kind of the history of what happened. We have never been in a loop, as far as the association is concerned, regarding what was taking place right under our nose. regarding what was taking place right under our nose. It was, uh, my bumping over, going over to the, uh, to the, uh, fire tank and seeing, uh, Mr. LeBlanc working on it. And that's how I found out that, oh, there was an engineering report done in May of, of twenty-one. Uh, was, it was delivered in May of twenty-one, it was done before that. So that was the first time I found out about it, and then under some of our discussions, as, as Mark mentioned, uh, the initial, the initial conversation we had with Mr. LeBlanc was, oh, the, the town is holding six thousand dollars for me, a bond, and, uh, if you can just pass over the sidewalk issue, we'll give you half of that. That was the first thing I, I found out about it. So after meeting with the board, going over some of the issues, and then getting, you know, the follow-up on some of the paperwork and so forth, that's, you know, that's how things evolved. Uh, I, I thoroughly looked at the situation with the, uh, the report, an engineering report, as all of you have seen, and just some of the issues with that. Uh, first thing he said, one of the things he, he noted in the engineering report was that the drains needed to be cleaned, and we were just in the process of having that done. I poked around in those and found that there was four to six feet of sludge, uh, sand, salt, whatever, in those drains. And that's why we were having backups into the basements, a lot of the units. Uh, so we spent, uh, twenty-eight hundred dollars doing that. In fact, it was being, almost being done at the same time the engineering report came out that we needed to have it done. Uh, the other thing, of course, was the sidewalks. And as Mark says, it's probably the initiating thing that's been going on. Uh, we did get a, a pricing from, uh, a paving company due to sidewalks. Uh, putting, applying three inches of asphalt and building the sidewalks would cost about twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that doesn't include landscaping, moving the utilities, going around trees, irrigation systems, all of those things, so. Although it'd be a wonderful thing for us to have sidewalks, it definitely is a main issue and would be a big problem for everybody there. Uh, we've had, with the weather issues and so forth, we've had, uh, three items that the paving company, uh, was supposed to do. First of all, we did have the, uh, sidewalk to the community center paved. There was, uh, uh, crushed shells at this point, and was, there was always overgrowth, those kinds of things. So that, that was done at a cost of eighteen hundred dollars. We've had a, a repair where the sloping, uh, to the drain in front of, uh, two units, uh, it, the water was just not getting to the drain, and it had become all cracked from freezing on freezing and so forth. Uh, that was completed also this year for a thousand dollars. The crack sealing is still been dependent upon the weather, and I don't think we're gonna be able to get to it till next year now, uh, because it requires some good warm weather. Uh, some of those smaller things were done, but, uh, the crack repairs that was brought out in the engineering report, uh, will cost us six thousand dollars to have that performed. Uh, the detention basin was another major issue with the report. Uh, we have, uh, a very good, uh, a very good excavation company, uh, Jay Raposo, who's right here in town, he does our snow plowing also. Uh, and he said he would price it up for us as far as cleaning out some of the sludge that's in the retention pond. Right now, it's, the weeds are about ten feet high, we got trees growing in there. Uh, he has a machine that the town probably uses to, just to wipe out the brush and so forth that he can do, but we haven't got a price on that yet. Uh, since I sent the report out originally, uh, to some people, I'm, I'm just gonna pass this out, so this is something new that. Just one, two, and three here, I got copies of it, so. Also, I'll show up, maybe you can just pass those down so he can take a quick peek. I think number one, there's, there's three things there, and there's copies if you can wanna grab them. Uh, one of the issues was, we had, uh, one resident who had his flooded, his basement flooded probably twice in the last three years, after he's here tonight. Uh, it ruined rugs and so forth, cost him quite a bit of money because and it was even sold flood insurance to help protect him for it, but that wasn't even being able to be used that. Uh, we had our excavation company come in, and if you look at the pipes that are shown there, the, uh, they were all perforated, soft piping that was put in, in all of those areas. And I shows, shows the pipe, we put in a Schedule thirty pipe, which is solid. Now, one of the questions I cannot understand is, this piping goes to the street drain. Right. The piping goes to the street drain, I can't understand why they use a perforated pipe. And once, in fact, the issue was that the water table was above the pri, the pipes. So he had his basement, he had a foot and a half of water in his basement, uh, twice over the period of three years. So we promised to get that fixed and get it done. So, uh, what I can't understand is why they would use perforated pipe to run it to a street drain. The street drains, to me, you know, they should be water going.
Could I ask you where that's coming from? Where that pipe is coming from and going to?
Right, it's coming from, uh, twenty-one?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. It comes from twenty-three, which is a fa, one of the father, uh, further, most, uh, drains coming off the, uh, French drain and coming off the, uh, coming off the roofs all goes into that particular drain, and then it runs down to twenty-one Windsor.
So is the, is the roof drain because of there?
Right.
Not the foundation drain?
It is both, both were connected into it, yeah. So, the, uh, it was a, a long run, about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty feet of piping that was put in.
It goes into the storm drain?
Pardon?
It goes into the storm drain?
Right. And, uh, as soon as we had the pipe connected, the water started going down in his basin. And now he hasn't had an issue, even with the two inches of rain we got, uh, a few days ago. The most he sees in there is about an inch of water. He had double sump pumps running for a long time, it just couldn't keep up with it. Plus, the issue was that he's pumping the sump pumps into the, into the gutter drain, which is clogged. So all he's doing is putting it back in the ground, it's a big vicious cycle, circle. That, in the end, has cost us seventy-eight hundred dollars to do that. Uh, another picture is, for, since the beginning of construction of duplex on it between fourteen and sixteen, Windsor, uh, was always having, uh, sewers backing into their basement. They thought it was, well, maybe we're using too much paper, blah, blah, blah. Uh, it happened again, and I s, I told them that this time we're gonna find out what's wrong. We had a, uh, a, a company come in, a rooter company come in and said it's completely blocked, they camered the whole thing. And, uh, it was, stone was in the piping, uh, growth was in the piping, and some of it was collapsed. And in fact, when they, when they took a look at it, and you, you could see that the, they dug, uh, in the garage, which was the only place they could get access to it. They dug a six-foot hole in the garage, probably six by six, and noticed that the pitch was coming backwards also. So they were able to get the debris and so forth and get it cleaned out, and they completely removed the pipe, put in a new piping, and, uh, since that time, there's been, uh, no issues, but. That was, and that, that was back in twenty, it was a six-thousand-dollar item that the association paid for. And lastly, to bring up my point, that third picture, if you see that clump of debris, uh, for years, I've been trying to find out where the community center drains go. A lot of the units, if they're up on a hill or next to a stone wall, they ran the drains off into the woods and so forth. There's a duplex on Windsor that I noticed just the other day, she's always been telling me where it is. Comes off, comes between the two duplexes, it goes right off into the woods, there's plenty of pitch there. I've been looking for the community center for a long time to try to find out where that water goes. There's always, there was always a very wet spot as we come down the little road, it goes into the back. I'm, I'm back there all the time doing stuff, so. Uh, we excavated a, a whole area so we could do, have a little more parking in there. We excavated, uh, where we've been keeping brush and branches, so as the community drops them off and so forth, or we bring them over. And I noticed, once it was excavated, there was a piece of white pipe sticking out. So I says, well, maybe I found the drain finally, but it was covered with dirt, bushes, you know, stumps, all kinds of stuff that had just grown in over the years. That was the first building that was, Mr. LeBlanc had built on ours, which was, uh, two thousand seven or eight. And, uh, so I was looking, and I s, I s, I even poured, uh, put a hose to the drain and just to see if anything was coming out, it was a little trickle. Then I noticed the end of that bunch of stuff. So I, I put something in it, kind of probe it, probe it, I got it moved a little bit, and I dragged it out of the pipe. And since that time, I've been down there a couple of times when the rain is cut, really coming down heavily, get that much water coming out of that pipe. So I made a little drain, run it off into the woods, so another problem solved, but, uh, but there are so many other issues. The cracks in the basement have been a major issue we've had. Mr. LeBlanc brought back in when people were moving into some of the units and saying, hey, hey, my basement's soaking wet, there's cracks in the basement already. Uh, we've had engineering reports, we've had a number of the, uh, unit owners that have, have had that fixed themselves. But, uh, we've fixed probably twelve to fifteen different large cracks in basements. The same thing with that duplex, we, we spent almost two thousand dollars. Uh, the crack was, but went all the way out to deteriorate there, basement flooded also be, beyond the sewage problem. But we spent over twenty thousand dollars over, uh, the last five or six years just sealing up cracks. The people we have doing them guarantee them for life, so hopefully, uh, we won't have any more issues. But, uh, we have plenty of water in, in fact, in the community center basement also. But that's just kind of a review of what's been going on. Uh, we would like to have some kind of conclusion using, we're not sure if the planning board has the, the powers to do that and so forth, but maybe to open up some kind of negotiation with Mr. LeBlanc. I know he likes to come and visit me, uh, which makes me a little uncomfortable, but, uh, he likes to come and visit me and sit on the porch and, uh, offer the sixty-eight hundred dollars, you know, to, uh, so he won't see him again, but, uh, that's it. I, I'm just calling upon the planning board to, you know, see what we can do. And I deeply appreciate your interest. I think the visit was very worthwhile, and, uh, I hope our relationship continues. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge was our first and only, uh, independent living facility. And I know that, uh, the builder was advertising it as an over fifty-five community. Uh, and I think that's what he presented to the planning board, and I don't think I was on the planning board, almost on the planning board, but I wasn't on the planning board, I was sitting out in the audience, listening to what was going on. And, um, in my previous life, I lived in a condominium complex in Connecticut, uh, in townhouses, and we had a hundred and fifty-six townhouse units in there. And probably stupidly, I was on the board of directors of this, this condominium association. So I know all the trails that you're talking about, times, I don't know how many units you have there, about forty?
Forty-three units.
Forty-three, so ours was four times bigger and had four times or probably more problems. Um, when you talk about basements, this is a, it's condominium ownership, even though there's individual units?
Right.
Do, does everybody own their own foundation? In the outside walls, or do, who, does the association, what is the association? Oh, the roofs? The outside of the building?
We, we all leave.
The association owns all the exterior, uh, whereas, you know, the, um, roofs, they need to be repaired, again, some have been repaired, sometimes very shortly after, disrupted, the painting, um, and, um, you know, and the foundations, uh, so that if anything occurs in that area, it comes out of our reserves or out of our fees.
So if there's a leak, uh, if the, if the foundation is cracked, that's an association problem?
We've, yeah, we've been, we've been paying for those for the years.
Yeah, I, as, as one of the last homes built, the second to the last, within three weeks of moving in, I had significant water in my basement, and I called Mr. LeBlanc. He said, I already left you a card in the kitchen for choice, basement waterproofing. Um, that was interesting, uh, they came, they're very amiable. First thing the guy says, I can't even believe they built houses here. Why is that, or you say that? He said, this is a swamp, you stick a hunting here all the time. And I started talking about what he's gonna do, he goes, oh, don't worry, I've been just invited to one of these places. I later found out from my next door neighbor that at one point prior to, you know, the, you know, building of the, the, the foundation, then half the foundation collapsed. So ironically, the part that was replaced was a little bit farther. We understand, again, we have a host of people here, been from various points of time, numerous people who were fired, others who needed quit, um, including the person who's on the paperwork listed as a contractor, who by his own admission said, I was not, I'm not a contractor, I'm actually a salesperson. He said, I guess you could call me a construction supervisor. I never left, then, because he left the job before the whole development finished.
So, uh, how can the planning board help? Uh, the planning board, uh, really doesn't have any jurisdiction on foundation cracks in, in the buildings themselves, except for what was stipu, stipulated in the decision to allow them to, to build this, which I believe included the pull streams. Um, and that should have been flagged by the building inspector, because that's what he's supposed to do, is, is looking at our, is look at the planning boards, not ours, I wasn't there. The planning board's decision of what's required, and that's supposed to be his bible to go check and see, did they do these things? Um, I, I think that we could, um, hold them to account on the sidewalk issue. We'd have to have Michael Burris and Amy go through page by page the whole file on this, on this project to see if the planning board at some point said, okay, you don't have to do the sidewalks, we'll take the, the path that you have around the back in, in lieu of. I don't know if that happened or not, and they have to go back and go page by page and see what it says. Uh, but if it doesn't say that, then I think we can still hold them to account for the sidewalk. But from what I'm hearing, you may not want the sidewalk, so that's, that's the question. And can we use, use the sidewalk issue to, uh, and the fact that he wants to build another one of these things next door, uh, to come to some kind of conclusion with you folks? Some of the issues that you- Some of the issues that you listed are really issues that are your responsibility anyway. Like keeping the retaining pond clean and mucking it out, mucking out the storm drains. That's not his responsibility, that's yours as the homeowner. And it's not the town's, because it's not a town road, it's a private road or private, what he calls a private driveway. But the driveway and a road have the same specifications, so it doesn't really matter, but it's not gonna be a public road. So those kind of things in the cracks and sealing the cracks and stuff like that, that's really your responsibility. But I think that we could, because he's coming before us and trying to do another one, we may be able to help you get some kind of resolution to some of these things. But I, I don't know that we have the authority to compel him to do any of these things, except perhaps the sidewalks or replace these drains that were put in improperly. That's part of what we do as a storm lawyer. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think on the drains, like from what I'm seeing, the one that you said was tied into the front drain, the roof drains. I mean, I was probably not, not investigating that myself from what you're telling me was the reason you were getting water in the basement. That's, the roof drains are supposed to be inspected by the building inspector. So.
I'm sorry if you repeat.
The roof drains are supposed to be inspected by the building inspector. So the deficiencies in that end, in which we hope to repair that and move forward if he wants to build another one, they need to be looked at by the building inspector, so we're coming up with, you know, he probably never looked at. So somebody buried the homework, they're done, they got a C.O., and now you're getting water in your basement, so that's how that stuff happens. More than likely, it wasn't built to spec, but it wasn't our consultant's job. And I'm, and I'm sure some of the things, being the first development like this in town, and then our consultant that does the roadways and all the other stuff, this stuff that I'm sure fell through the cracks with the sewage, because you gotta be community septic. So I'm sure that septic was being looked at. Now, septic's being looked at, the border health. But who's looking at the, there's plumbing going into the building, you know, that plumbing inspector ten foot out, no one, no one's looking, we don't have anybody. So, I mean, that slipped through the cracks.
When the holes are open and the piping is laid out, that's when the inspector's supposed to be coming in and saying, yeah, okay, right.
Well, the, the, the contractor's supposed to call them.
Call them, yeah.
You know, I mean, we have one building inspector.
Right.
So, I mean, it's pretty tough on the police, this stuff too, in his defense, but that's what kind of happens.
Yeah, we had one resident who was sort of doing a little work for the contractor. He said he used to see the, the building inspector come in, go up to the piece of paper and sign it and walk off without looking at anything. And, you know, so it's, I guess those things happen and it's not a good thing, but.
It's, it's not a good thing, but it's, you know, as I said, I was on the board of directors of my condominiums. I was a president for a long time, and they were three stories high, and I was walking on the roofs up there, looking at the roofs, because we had trouble with the gutters and we had trouble with how we made the road and we had trouble with, just like you have, that the roof drains were put into the front drains and people, they had floating washing machines in their basement. And so we had to excavate on the outside of the building and, and get it away from the building.
Yeah.
So we, I've done all this stuff myself. And we contacted the city, this is in the city of Norwalk, and I contacted the city and the city just said, basically. And, you know, I wish, I think in the, in the future, you know, we all live and learn how to deal with these things from the, the perspective of approving them and trying to itemize everything that they must do. And we live and learn. And so, but a lot of the things that you're talking about are not part of what we do here. They're the building inspector or the board of health or whatever. But I think that we anticipate he will be here on December twelfth. And we'll have a discussion about all these things.
Mr. Chair, perhaps the, the scout can dig up this file and look at it before it's something.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
And we can figure out what, what is it that he was committed to do and, and then we can see whether or not it's done. And we can begin this conversation when he comes in about these, this, here's your permit and here's what you're committed to do and here's what it, you know, some of us have been out there and, and walked aside and understand what the issue is. And we can, for the things he's obligated to do that are, are in our special permit, those we can hold him to. The, the, on the, on the plans that we approve, the buildings are just shown as boxes, so there's no, we, we have no control over that.
Is the, is the engineering report in order to finalize, I guess, the final, the finalization of the project? Isn't that what the engineering report was supposed to be for, to okay the?
You come up for the release of the, of the bond, give him a clean bill.
Is there, is there a bond still being held? I, I'm not sure.
I think there's a little bit of money, but it's not anything of.
It's probably that sixty-eight million dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's either sixty-eight or like eighty-five hundred.
Enough to buy a lunch, that's it?
I would ta, I would take that lunch, I guess, I don't know what that entails. But the engineering report was made because he submitted an as-built. And the engineering report came back saying the as-built he submitted was insufficient. And he has not submitted another as-built to be reviewed yet.
So the one thing I do remember from sitting in the audience when this thing was first approved is there was a lot of discussion about steps into the buildings. And the, and that it should be minimal rise from going from the front porch or the driveway into the building so you could get there with a, without having to build a ramp if somebody had, had a problem. And the other issues that I remember this, them discussing was width of doorways inside the unit. And they wanted to have a regular standard thirty inch wide doorways. I said, that's not enough, you need twenty-six. And they said, well, if somebody comes and needs it, we'll build it that way. That's what I recall. I don't know what the final thing was, because I wasn't on the board. But, and also the pull strings.
Most, most of the units have three stairs, some have two in the front, you know, which, which isn't used that much. It's mostly the, you know, delivery people that throw stuff up on the porches and so forth.
But should we know that none of those handrails installed? We've had to have personally, I have someone, the resident, who, you know, has that skill. Yeah, I can't overcome this, it's the safety issues here, we're just lightly ignored.
Could you, Anna, come up there?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, my name is Clayton Harrison, I'm a resident and part of the oversight committee. Just listening to the conversation and looking as what's going on with our meetings and so forth, I think the, this whole build-out process was not followed correctly. I think we need to be in agreement on that. Situation is, it was a prior planning board. My understanding is, the developer submits a plan for review and acceptance. Once the plan is accepted, an engineering company and the town boards, building, you know, electrical, gas and so forth, do check the progress of the build-out. Am I correct to assume that?
Yes.
This got lost somewhere in a shuffle. And we as residents have no clue about building houses and a lot of us moved in after they were built and find out that there are issues with some of the houses there. I turned to the call report, which was produced for the board, for the planning board, and there are obvious defects. I mean, everything is coming back to the residents. I think the, the developer, along with the town, has some responsibility to what has happened with this development. And some remedies need to be done. We have the developer now looking for a final as-built. I don't know where the planning board's gonna go with this. All it involves is basically the sidewalks. I don't know what the call report will enter into this, this equation. And I request with the committee that the planning board do what they can to assist this approved development that's kind of dumped on us now. I think that a few of you have been there and seen some of the problems. Some are rectifiable, some are not. You know, we're finding things now, a few years down the road, what's gonna happen, you know, in the future. So I think that the, the, the process wasn't followed. And I think that, that needs to be, you know, part of your ability to look and see what, what can be done or what should be done. I think that's pretty much what my concern. Some of the houses are, are affordable units. I think that was part of the plan. And who is monitoring as to whether these remain as affordable? Which to stop somebody from moving in, then selling it at market price. Has that been looked at?
I think, I, I hope it's on the deed restriction. We don't get involved with that. It's the Affordable Housing Trust that, that.
You know, so there's a number of things in this development that, that need some oversight. And people who buy in there, they, they say it's a nice place and too bad there's no sidewalks, but we'll have to make it, make it work. All right, I, I just wanted to bring that up.
I, I agree with almost everything you're saying. I mean, I think that we have work to do as a town to try to make sure that all these things get done properly. And I think as Manny was saying, that, you know, sometimes, probably fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years ago when this was being built, I don't know what the, the staffing was for the building inspector's office, if they had enough people to, to do what they're supposed to be doing. And a lot of problems come up when, you know, there, there's, as you said, when the ditch is open and the pipes are in the ground, they're supposed to come and inspect. And if they get there, if they get there and it's already covered up, what do they do? I mean.
Get a shovel.
Well, you know, isn't an engineering company designated at the builder's expense to oversee the build-out?
They're not, they're not there all the time. They're only called there when the builder says, okay, you can come in and look, because we're at that point. And that's where the road, that's where the, the drainage, and we get pictures all the time of.
Sure.
Pipes in the ground before they fill it in, the coal gives us these, these things. But it takes cooperation from the builder to alert the engineer that they're ready for an inspection. And they should be doing the same thing with the building inspector. The building inspector's office should be coming.
Yeah, our, our building inspector, wiring inspector, water help. They, they look at single houses.
Right.
These are a bunch of single houses. You know, it's just.
They, they shouldn't have been treated any differently. They should have been cut the same.
Correct, that's.
I mean, they're almost dependent on the credibility of the builder.
Exactly.
The point I'm making is that, that because of these stories that we've all begun to share, because we've had different lengths of time being there, about people quitting, you know, people coming on and just having conversations with Mr. LeBlanc about fishing and hunting and checking out the paper and the evening. And, and I want to get, well, lose the fact that if I understand the process correctly, when the whole development was finished, he was then supposed to go to the planning board and have it reviewed by the engineering department.
They were supposed to do an as-built.
An as-built.
And then the engineering company would come and review the as-built and go on site to make sure it, it complied with what the as-built says.
So, I mean, who knows, historically, let's say it's twenty twenty, maybe if that was done, seven and a half years before the call report came out, when the project was done, we would all be sitting in this situation right now.
You may have had the same problems then.
Well, you may have, but maybe it would have been more, would have been correctable, some of them would have avoided. Again, I agree with you, you know, it's a lesson learned. People who do these projects need to know what to do and they need to be.
Held accountable.
Held accountable and they need to have some, you know.
Oversight, that's exactly what the, the thing is. The process, you know, got weak and it, it didn't get followed through. And I think that's a big part of it.
You're creating problems.
One, and I'm not sure if it was the case back then, but we're on this, a thing now that's called controlled, controlled construction that kind of lifts the burden off the building inspector. So I think some of like the issues you're bringing up, I mean, we can possibly do this as, as a planning board, but we, we need to bring this to selectmen's kind of attention. I'm not sure if controlled construction was in place at the time. As far as we're as a board, we're mostly concerned with roadway infrastructure. Again, like, like you said, they, they have building envelopes. At that time, maybe the drainage from the house lots was included in the calculation on the roadways. So we're overseeing, and that's what our consultant does, S.W. Co.
Yeah.
So the building inspector in today's world, which was probably in that case too, in controlled construction, that means that their consultant should be giving reports to the building inspector. And, and essentially what you do is you have, you have an engineer and an architect whose license is, is online saying that this was done. That kind of lifts the burden from the building inspector. He just has to review reports. Now, I don't know if that was the case. But we have a couple of things in town that have this type of thing going on right now. And, and I mean, I know in the future this will happen, but to fix deficiencies back then, I don't know if that was the case. I'm pretty sure it was still under controlled construction, but, you know, back in the day, if the builder could come and just post permit, because of the size of your project, it's not building a second family house. And now the architect's supposed to be responsible. So the architect should be responsible for the foundations, the roof drains. Like those drains, that foundation drain around the house, I'm pretty sure that it probably shouldn't went into the storm system anyway, because it's, it was for infiltration, it's not in the calculation. So there was a lot of different issues. That's really, even our consultant's not looking at that, and that's not what he's there for us. But the building department, that's, that's where they come in.
We're trying to determine where we need to go. I mean, we're before, and we appreciate the opportunity to, to meet with the planning board, but we don't know how far we need to go. Do we need to meet with the town administrator, the board of selectmen? I mean, where do we, where do we go from there?
Yeah, I think this is an issue of leverage with the developer. And nowadays, under the current chairman, who's been here a long time, but wasn't here when this project happened. project happened, you get a surety or bond that covers the cost of the improvements that we're talking about. Uh, right now, I, we're dealing with a problem that the surety doesn't come close to covering the cost of the issues that we as the planning board are, care about, uh, which is the sidewalks and the pole cords. Now, uh, we may find that there are other issues we care about, but right now we know it's the sidewalks and the pole cords. You care about a lot of issues. I lost track when you were, uh, running up your bill of all the things that, that you've gotta do, but...
Some angry people, Bill.
I know, I know. But I, uh, you know, I lost track at about fifty thousand dollars of all the things that you've gotta pay for.
Look at your coal report.
And, and, and the deli, and the developer says, well, why don't we split the six thousand bucks and you go away happy? Uh, and I'm thinking, I bet that went over well. Uh, and so, uh, there's no leverage. Uh, now, um, the sidewalks were, what were they, twenty-two, twenty-eight thousand? No. And so that doesn't get covered in the surety, whether it's sixty-six, sixty-eight, or eighty-five. So what does create leverage? Uh, well, I thought I heard the chairman say, does the developer wanna do some more development in this town?
Yes.
Right next door.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So he wants to do some more development. Uh, now, that creates leverage. Uh, and so, uh, that creates leverage. Uh, where all of a sudden, maybe there is a reason for him to pay attention to, uh, the things that we're interested in. Sidewalks, pole cords, and maybe Michael and Amy find other things that are on our list of concerns. Maybe even finds things that are on your list of concerns. So I think that, uh, that's what I would pay attention to, is what creates leverage. 'Cause nowadays, we make sure that the surety creates leverage. Uh, but unfortunately, uh, back, I'll just call it the, the pre-Whiten days, you know, that didn't happen. So we don't, we have to be imaginative and think about what else is gonna create leverage with, with this guy. And that is, wants to do another project, and so, you know...
He may, he may just start completely building, not building anything in Westport anymore. You know?
He might.
And I know he's building a lot of stuff and getting it himself.
You guys have cars?
Yeah.
You guys have cars?
Yes.
Cars.
Cars?
Automobiles?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Do they get to Tiverton or...
Go ahead, order the war.
Well, you know Tiverton, we don't know. All right, it's just...
But, but that's my, my point is that, uh, you said, uh, that these problems started to occur almost immediately. Uh, and yet forty-three units were sold, right? So I can understand two or three. But, you know, what about the forty-third unit? How did that get sold?
Well, I mean, I can only speak for myself, 'cause I was probably forty-one, you know, that, um, and the decisions, as a potential homeowner, uh, that, first of all, it's my first venture into an over fifty-five community or even condominium. And there's this, there's a trust factor that's implicit that is started by the relationship with the builder. And then, um, when we're making decisions about sinks and showers and all that kinda stuff, there's an implicit trust that, um, this guy knows what he's doing.
Yeah.
And then, really, the, the best, what, the greatest thing that he did for us was coming here last November second, because now all of us have it when I'm talking. Oh, you have a tap problem? You have this problem?
Yeah.
Or I don't do minutes of, I'm not, of all, all of them, but I will do some events in the planning board these. And I, I uncovered letters that had been sent by some of our residents detailing expensive problems. So I think that's the biggest hint. Can we read?
All right. Well, I, I take your point. And let me make one final point. And that is that, um, uh, as, any, anyone who's been to town meeting and seen the warrant articles that go through, in, uh, in many ways, Westport is a town of incredible richness and lots of people who do an awful lot for this town. But, uh, we're also a town that is incredibly frugal when it comes to budgets for operating our town. And what that means is when it comes to staffing town services, uh, you have a lot of employees in municipal government, whether it's the schools, or the planning office, or the building department, that are, uh, stretched very thin. And so you, several of you have talked about the, the need for oversight on developers. Agreed. We all agree. But, uh, when you have a lot of growth going on, when you have a lot of building going on, but you don't have a lot of people in a building department, just to take one example, then it's hard to provide, uh, that oversight, because there's just an awful lot of, a lot of people wanna live in Westport. It's a beautiful town, beautiful town. And a lot, you, all you have to do is drive around and you see how much building's going on. Uh, and it, it really taxes the, uh, the building inspector, uh, to, to do that oversight. And you see, you see maybe more than anybody be, uh, what happens when you're not able to do that oversight. So keep that in mind at town meeting and stuff like that, when, when those kinda issues come up.
Appreciate that observation. And to that end, I do want to name Jim and you all for advocating to have Michael on board of, you know, and...
Okay.
So...
Well, we're trying to put him to work now.
Hopefully this is a good...
He might not sleep well tonight.
Yeah, I don't know.
And Michael, you're certainly advising him to come out and run eyeball some of this person. Amy can facilitate that communication.
Yeah. Well, where do we go from here? I guess that's the bottom line.
Well, we have a meeting on December twelfth.
Eighteenth.
Thirteen?
Um, let me see. Oh, the thirteenth.
Thirteenth. So I would plan on being back here on the thirteenth, because he's supposed to be here. Uh, and, um, but check in with Amy and Michael and Nadine, because, uh, if he's not gonna show, uh, we're gonna close the hearing and make a decision. So that's what we've told him. So it's been continued enough, so...
Thank you.
But, but the question in my mind is, do you want sidewalks or do you want sidewalks?
Can I just put a name?
Sure.
Name is Jim Coak, and I'm on the board for the second time. And I was on the first board, uh, a year that fucking left. As a developer, he was considered part of the board. Those X amount of buildings were built, and then we had a regular board of five people.
Could you hold one second? Valerie, are you picking up his voice, or do we need to have him come to the microphone?
It's not about the mic, it's about the rules. If you wanna go, it's...
Yeah, if you come up to the microphone, it'd be better.
The, the, the reason, the reason, um, we asked him to come to the microphone is that he's, this is being broadcast and, and it's being recorded.
Perfect. I tried to be incognito, but...
It, it, it is recorded for these bikes.
Thank you. Um, the only reason I bring that up is when I was on the board, when I became on the board, at the time when I was looking at bu, looking at buying in there, at no time ever was there any discussion on sidewalks. It never came up. And it never came up until we've had problems now. And now people were saying, what are you talking about sidewalks? It's impossible to put sidewalks in where we are right now. The roads are three feet, three feet narrower than a normal road, right? You would have to put a grass bank and you would have to put a three-foot sidewalk in. Impossible. You'd have to change every driveway. You'd have to take down some stone walls. You'd have to take down some poles for light, lighting. You'd have to take down just about everything. So in order to do that, it's not gonna cost twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's gonna cost an enormous amount of money to do it. So we hold that over his head, saying, you didn't do this. Like you said, now what do we do? Now we'd hopefully get some help from the, from the town.
So what you wanna say is you want sidewalks?
Okay.
Yes, we want sidewalks.
You want sidewalks?
Yes.
So that's what you're saying.
Why do you have to pay for it?
That's what I'm saying.
Right. And then, and then you can negotiate away from it.
Exactly. Thank you.
Next leverage.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate this a lot.
Thank you. We'll do what we can.
Did you all be back here on the thirteenth?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you take these?
It'll help your drug...
It was a bad news, bad news that you got water to drink. Okay, uh, next up is three oh nine Gifford Road, Carvela, file number twenty-two dash oh oh four SP dash CD dash FF, endorsed plan and decision. Has everybody looked at the decision?
Jim, I, I have to admit I could not read it because I, uh, came in...
Came in late.
Late, and I was busy with other things between then and the meeting.
We only have a certain amount of time to do this, right?
Did we concur this was a fifty percent reduction? I know there was some debate back
No, that, that was correct. I was, uh, referring to the overall easement, if you will, if that's the right term. But, uh, but the paved area was the area in question. And that has been reduced.
The paved, yeah. The paved area's been reduced by seventy-five percent. Of the, of the circle, not of all the, I think that was the intention, to have them reduce the circle.
So, uh, do you need, uh, a single motion approving both of these decisions?
I guess we could combine it, sure.
Well, I would move that we, uh, approve both, uh, decisions on the special permit approval of the common driveway and the frec, uh, flec, easy for you to say, John, flexible frontage for three oh nine Gifford Road. Uh, uh, the applicants, Joakim and Sandra Cavalo.
Discussion. You ready, Don? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have a copy we can sign?
Yeah, I've got, I've got it back here.
Gee, MassDOT highway permitting requirements.
This is a, a letter I penned on behalf of you, Jim, and the rest of the planning board, um, to send to the, uh, board of selectmen, to then send on to the building department. Um, following last, the last planning board meeting, there were some concerns about, um, applicants not reaching out to MassDOT to, um, get, or apply for permits, um, when their, their projects are located on State Route six eighty-eight and one seventy-seven, um, prior to them beginning construction. So this is a letter to the select board to forward on to, um, uh, the, the building department.
So I guess the question I have, is this changing our rules and regulations? If so, do we have to have a public hearing? Or is it just a letter of, of reminder to the select board?
Correct. It's a reminder.
This, this I think is advisory, and I think this changes our regulations. Mr. Chairman, what actually, um, are you looking for the board's concurrence in this later?
Yes.
Um, I, I agree that we should, um, send this to the board of selectmen and, um, to have this be on, on record as when applicants come before the town for building permits, uh, if their access is on the state highway, they've got to conform with the, uh, the
Someone sign a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, my one.
Just another one from, um, to authorize Michael to sign.
Okay, uh, let's see, what else? We're at the minutes of October fourth.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would, uh, move that we approve the minutes of October fourth, but I have a number of, uh, si, uh, corrections. So, um, if someone seconds it, I'll go along with the corrections. Uh, under the administrative items B, chapter sixty-one release, uh...
What page?
Uh, first page, right near the top. Um, the motion that I made reads, move to recommend the release of MAP forty-eight. That language in the motion should, uh, mirror, uh, the title, uh, the select board is requesting comments on the release of land owned by Paul L. and Viola Gay, located at Zero Division located at Zero Division Road, map forty-eight, lot twelve. So, it should say, Bullard moved to recommend the release of land owned by. It should just be the same language. I'm not releasing a map. We're releasing land. Follow?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, second, I, in the six fifteen public hearing, uh, we just were talking about Westport Horizons Development Corp. on page two. The motion is correct because it talks about the public hearing on December thirteenth, which we just talked about. But above that, uh, it has, the public hearing will be December eighteenth. And so, that needs to say December thirteenth. And then, the last one is, uh, that I found was page three. Uh, about two-thirds of the way down, under Maya Way. Uh, the motion has seconded by Bullard five zero zero, and then a second by Bullard, which, that second by Bullard should just be deleted. Other than that, I thought they were excellent.
This, uh, this, this needs to be fixed. Uh, the, the Michael Burris in the first instance is not the same Michael Burris as being justified in the second. His name is misspelled down below. She, she can't swear in, I, I, I don't, she might find a guy like that. It, it's not the same guy that's at the top.
Yep, should be an, uh, an I, not an E. Okay.
So, the, on page three, in the housing production plan, uh, we have a lot of first-person references there. I will do this, I will do this, I will do this. Is that the appropriate way to say it?
What page are you on?
Page three at the bottom, Housing Production Plan.
Oh, that's because this is, um...
She took it from...
This is, I think this is from my Assistant Planner's Report.
Right.
Number four, Assistant Planner's Report. So, it's me speaking as I, because I wrote it. I can change it, though, to make it...
I, I think it should say who the person is.
Okay.
And the same with the annual reports for MS four, I submitted.
Yeah, I think she copied and pasted just from my...
Yeah, I think she did.
That's, that's the I which is you, right?
Yes, me. I am the I. Yeah.
You're not the I that wrote this and signed it at the bottom, so...
Correct, all right. I will change, I will change those.
Yeah, it says at the top, Ms. Messier read her Assistant Planner's Report into the record under Assistant San, Planner's Report, and then...
Maybe I could just plug, which was the following? Or I could change it to, I could change it.
Yeah, the other thing was on the discussion of the cease and desist. I can't find it at the moment, but... Oh, it's on my, about, no, it should be on Maya Way, I guess. No, not Stacy, Stacy Lane.
Stacy Lane. There, there was a motion there to, I, I, I think. Uh, this is where we said...
Maybe send that to letters to the...
To issue the cease and desist.
Right.
And that, that passed, we, that motion passed.
Yeah, that passed, yeah.
Yes, um, for Stacy Lane, Mr. Bullard made the motion, and Mr. Daley made the second, and it was a unanimous yes.
So, was that...
So, that's not, uh, included here, so that needs to be added then, huh? On Stacy Lane.
Yeah, the, the, the same wording that's in the letter needs to be in this, for the motion.
Okay, I can, I can pull it from the letter and put it here.
And I think where it says about Bullard, it says that Whiten, uh, suggested that we do a cease and desist. What I said was, uh, what it should say is, Whiten suggested that we write a letter to the Building Inspector to issue a cease and desist, 'cause we can't issue a cease and desist.
Yes, and that is what the letter, the actual letter says, so I can pull, I can pull it from that.
Well, other than that, it's perfect.
Other than that.
Other than that, Mrs. Lane.
So, anyway, uh, we have a motion and a second, and we have quite a few edits. Are we comfortable?
Yep.
Approving it without seeing the edits?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Invoices.
Uh, you want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Uh, oh, finally, we get a ch- a chair for the planner. He's been standing for a couple of weeks. Uh, I move that we approve, uh, two invoices. One to Versair for office panels for the town planner for seven hundred ninety-two dollars, and a second to W B Mason for an office chair for the town planner for a hundred and eighty-six dollars and nineteen cents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, short and long-term planning discussions. We really need to get Russ Burke to give us a contract. We need to set up the first meeting, uh, and we have to decide who's going to interface with Mr. Burke, uh, from the board, uh, in addition to our planning department.
Amy did, for, for the record, Amy did send, uh, Russ a reminder this afternoon. Unfortunately, haven't heard anything.
And last week.
And last week, she sent a message to him as well. I think it was Thursday or Friday.
Okay, so, uh, we just need to get the contract over to Tim Hartner. I believe he can sign it, 'cause it's already approved for thirty-five thousand dollars. Plus, I think he still owes us some, some hours.
Okay.
So, from the last one, which we prepaid, 'cause the time was running out. So, it may be that we have a couple thousand dollars worth of hours on top of the thirty-five. Uh, so who do we want to... I should say it a different way. Who wants to be on the subcommittee dealing with Mr. Burke?
I, I would be happy to do it.
No?
I was, uh, I was gonna report on my long-term building committee.
Okay. Well, okay, so I will be happy to do it, um, and if we need to have more people involved, I think we're, need to come back to the planning board each meeting that we have and tell everybody where we are.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, you know, I was thinking, you know, about the folks, uh, the staff that's out this morning, and, uh, both on our, uh, grant application, looking at, uh, increasing our eligibility based on the work that Michael did on the census stuff, and also, ju- just thinking about, you know, getting them briefed from my thinking on, uh, you know, what we need to tackle on Route six, and, you know, there's a bunch of things to tackle in the business district or something. And, and also, being mindful of the time. I, I think, I, I think particularly if we are gonna do a, a bunch of small fix-up zoning items, that we may be really aiming for a town meeting in twenty twenty-four to adopt a major, uh, result. And trying to get, you know, the warrant closes in February, trying to get public hearings and draft a warrant, and that, that's, that's bound to be, as, as much as we want to make a good job to, to maybe watch it, it's just isn't enough time.
It, it, I think it could be, 'cause time has, has been running out, dri- dripping away, just like my life.
And, and the, and the other thing that, uh, uh, you know, to just be close to the meeting, but I, I think John, you know, put his, his, his finger on it, really, is, is the idea of, of wh- why aren't people watching things? Why aren't you doing more inspections? Why aren't there more staff, you know? The plain reality is that, uh, I think the police and the fire department are both the same size as they were in two thousand. The, the, the major of the town staff is actually smaller than it was in two thousand. And, um, and if we don't deal with the budget issues in some effective way, this, this kind of stuff of who's watching the store, why didn't you come out and look at inspections? All of that kind of stuff, it's, it, it, it will just grow worse and worse. And, and it doesn't, and it doesn't serve, it didn't serve this group in a public way. And, and it will c- not, it will continue not to serve the public well. And with that, I, I move to adjourn.
No, no, Mark has something else to plug.
Well, yeah, I've, I've just, because I think it would be of interest to this board just to update you. 'Cause as you know, thanks to my colleague, Mr. Bullard, who appointed me to a long-term, on the long-term building committee, um, we had a...
Hey, you live a long life, too.
Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna get that far. So, there was a meeting last week, anyway, and, uh, so I've been on the committee about a year, but it was sort of the culmination of about three years of, uh, various studies as to what to do with the old high school, as you know. And, um, in that time, we had an appraisal of the school, um, which you probably read in the newspapers, where it's eleven, eleven million dollars. And we've also had, uh, an architecture firm named U Teal, who've done another. They did the original feasibility study of what could you do with that building? What are the potential scenarios of using it for either office space, municipal office space, or housing, or other various uses? And, uh, they followed that up with a more in-depth study of what would be involved to convert, renovate the building to o- uh, offices for the town. So, that would mean moving, that you could move everyone from the town hall, everyone who's in this annex, the, and it included the folks of the Council of Aging, Council of Aging, and the, um, school administration, which is there now. Moving up, uh, renovating their spaces, their space for them in that building. And, uh, and then, secondly, alternatively, what would it cost if all of these offices I just mentioned were not to move, but we were to renovate the spaces that they're in? So, for instance, renovate the town hall and renovate this building, or alternatively, build an addition to the town hall, which would accommodate all of the functions that are here in this building, so we could get them all at least within one structure? And, um, so that was another o- uh, option. And, um, the... So, it's a sort of a matrix of, of di- of four different options, and we had costs associated with them. You know, just very briefly, and, and just in very rough, round numbers, I'll tell you, uh, what those four options were. Option A was sell the school, assuming one could get, and, and, or using numbers, which are, could drastically go up or down, but sell the school for eleven million dollars. Renovate all of these office spaces that we are in now for the town hall, the annex, the council of aging, and the school administration. And, uh, that was a total of about fourteen million. So, uh, eleven million in revenue, offset by fourteen million in expense, the net cost to the town would be about three million. Option B was renovate the, uh, the school, the old high school, including demolishing, uh, like forty-four thousand square feet of it, because the building is one hundred fifty, one hundred fifty-five thousand square feet. It's much more than is needed, even with expansion space for, uh, for town offices, council and aging, and the school administration. But that cost was a rather eye-popping number of twenty-nine million. Slightly offset by, well, if that happened and we vacated these off, these buildings, they could be put up for, at best case, for sale. And, uh, it was some rough estimates of selling the town hall, the annex, and the council of aging for a total of three million. Again, just a guess, but it still leaves the town with a price tag of twenty-six million to, to that move. And, uh, there was two more options, and the third was converted to affordable housing and, um, in part, and then also have the town offices over there. And the fourth option was to demolish the school, uh, which has a price tag of, right now, about two point three million. And, uh, proceed with these renovations of these, these buildings. Keep everybody where they are, uh, but renovate their office spaces. And, uh, of course, there's complications in all of these and caveats about the cost. And you have to keep in mind, if you're gonna renovate these buildings, you're probably gonna have to relocate everyone temporarily, so there'll be costs associated with that, and, uh, and then move them back in. But, um, at the end of the, uh, the evening, the committee, if you could be interested, made a motion, um, which says, and I, I'll read, this is a draft, so I know this is, but this is an open meeting, and I know this is being recorded, so this is only a draft. The motion being, the committee recommends to the Board of Selectmen that an attempt... that an attempt to use the building for municipal uses be made and further that it be presented to the public in the form of a non-binding question. The committee believes that the municipal use option and the required funding be presented to the public. So it's in essence uh the committee was in favor of this notion of renovating the building, keeping our building, the old high school and renovating it and moving all the municipal offices, council and aging, and the keeping the uh school administration there. Now um and you may say, well, that was potentially a twenty six million dollar price tag. And the discussion, the arguments that I heard in favor of that were that one it it might be short-sighted if we sell this building now, that we're gonna regret it later. That we can consolidate all our offices in one building, which we've talked about. It would keep the gym and the playing fields, because they need the extra playing fields now. And that it was a central location, central geographically to the town. And um and finally that it, you know, it provided expansion for the recognizing the kind of on the discussion we had just now about the growing as our town grows. And there'll be nee- need for more space, so even if we renovate these buildings here we may find ourselves pinched for space in the future. So as I said, the sort of the compelling arguments in favor of do it of going down this path at least presenting it to the voters too, that's an important part of this. And uh giving them the opportunity to weigh in um in a non-binding question. And yes, I mean, we've talked about the all the structural deficits that we're facing and all the financial
I I move that we have Mark present that to town meeting. I'll be standing way behind him.
I think I just booked a ticket to California. That's right, they've gotta find some space anyway, if they don't.
That's that's it, yeah.
So there's
So so I guess the question is, if you sold the building I know that this isn't a twenty first century building or room but do we really need to redo it for how much? Does it cost them redoing the buildings?
Fourteen million.
Fourteen million. Well, they they put new lights in, but this is incremental over time, they put new windows in. Um they did a new heating system, I think, um but
Yeah, this building alone was, I mean, again, these are their estimates and this building, the annex no, I'm sorry, it was really assuming they built an addition to the town hall using eighty seven hundred square feet, which is what the what's here now and buil- what building new. But I think you, even if you uh stayed here and did a complete gut job and renovated it, if you were to go that far it's probably gonna be a similar uh order of magnitude.
So does somebody think they could actually find a purchaser for the high school for eleven million dollars?
That's another issue too. We have no idea at this point whether that that's a realistic figure.
And you couldn't be because of the way the area is zoned, it had to be rezoned if it were business. And um if it were an educational facility, since it still is an educational facility that works, but
Yeah.
You can continue the use, zone residential
Has has to be continued.
across.
Right.
Yeah.
'Cause if you if you break it and then you, let let's say you you decided to put the elementary school in there or something. If it if it stops being used as a school, there's there's a there's a process in which if you jump back in then then you have to meet the new school standards for how many space per student and cafeteria space per student. I mean, that that triggers a whole bunch of stuff if you you know, if it continues to be used as a school, you can you can stay rent paid. But it's a it's it's a big issue, putting it up for sale and saying, okay, what you can do with is those single-family homes.
Right. Or if you knock it down. So you're gonna pay two point three million dollars to knock it down, and then you're gonna have a piece of property that's probably worth a million. So is that really? But I guess that's cheaper than continuing to to uh mothball it forever.
Yeah, the if I'm correct, the caring costs of that I heard were up to three to four hundred thousand a year.
It doesn't take much
Heating amendments.
And and that will that will increase.
So
Build buildings hate to be empty.
Well, so the town is, it's a big it's a big issue and he a- any of these options has the pluses and minuses. They all involve tremendous amounts, sums of money. But uh yeah, we've now got at least some at least when I came on the board, uh committee I should say, it was really a lot of discussion, well, we don't know how much the building's worth. We don't know how much it'll cost to renovate the old buildings, the other buildings. At least now, for better for worse, we do have some data to work to to make informed decisions. But uh it will certainly be a quite a, be quite an issue to present to ones presenting.
Right, so if if this were just vacant and we wanted to move in the way we are now, we couldn't have done that today. You'd have to upgrade this with all kinds of stuff, probably fire suppression and real ADA compliant bathrooms and those ways and everything, just you.
But that one's not vacant, the school's in there, the administration.
That's true. That's true, but if we move the town offices in there, is that is that a threat on it? I guess we're the town, I guess.
Judging by this municipal uses or or university allows of I I still think we have to be, have some safety in ADA compliance, but I think we would as far as they we don't stumble over the use provisions.
Right.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.